Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 7:01. Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is the December 15, 2022, regular Board of Education meeting for Deerfield Public Schools, District 109. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on our agenda is what's good in 109. Mr. Steckling.
All right. Thank you, President Montgomery, and the board, and the administration. Full house today. This might be the biggest we've had this month. We'll get to our guests in just a little bit, but for those that have not been to a board meeting in a while, we title this beginning part of the meeting "What's Good in 109", and we do a quick, kind of fly-around to the district of some great things happening across all six of our schools. This first one I wanted to start with because it involved everybody in our district, and that is, we just wrapped up the 109 Gives Back Holiday Gift Drive. It's the third year we've done that. We were able to help about three dozen local families in need that are picking up gifts as soon as tonight to make sure that everybody has a great holiday season. So, a big thank you to everybody. If you donated in the audience, if you, you know, helped anybody watching at home, we appreciate you. Additional thanks to everybody I've listed there. Eileen Brett and Stephanie Bean really housed all of this stuff at Wilmot, so thank you for letting us take over the entryway of your school. Ally Croman really helped kind of pick up the missing pieces where things were. Kat Schrader, my new assistant, was vital in helping keep everybody calm and caffeinated. Joanna Ford, Marcy Faust especially helped on that night. And then Joanna, Marcy, and I each decided it'd be great to have our children help. I don't think mine were super helpful, but it was, it was a good effort at organizing gifts that night.
The six-month-old didn't do much, huh?
No, he didn't do much at all, no. As a reminder, our new tagline this year is "Challenge, Collaborate, Create," and so you'll see that highlighted throughout here. So, let's go around the district really quick. At Caruso, Ms. Lee invited me to Mandarin class here, and they learned the Chinese game Go, which is kind of like Connect Four and checkers and confusing, and I think Mr. Brodeur was there with me. Where is he hiding now? You went to this like two or three times, and it was still like, the adults were very confused, but the kids picked it up. So, it was really cool to see them kind of try this new experience and not be afraid of it. At South Park, the challenge was how to budget your money properly. The second grade had an auction where the families all contributed different little toys and items that kids could bid on. They had earned kind of these fake dollars from good things that they had done in class and stuff. And then the auction started, and right away, you saw one or two kids like bid everything they had on the first thing, and then they were done, whereas the ones that waited cleaned up at the end when everybody else was out of money. So, they're gonna do this again later this year and kind of go over the post-mortem of, how did we do this? How could we adjust for next time? So, kind of a cool thing to teach kids that. This, I just had to show you. Stephanie Stringer, one of her second-grade classes, is working on persuasive writing. So, they said, "All right, let's convince Mrs. Stringer of something we can add to Walden School." So, we're not gonna name the student, but this letter she received. "Dear Mrs. Stringer, I think that we should have a pool because everybody gets way too hot in the summer. Also, kids love swimming. Also, swimming is exercising, so please get us a pool." Told her we wouldn't bring it up at the board meeting in terms of having you guys vote on anything, but she got a lot of different ideas. Somebody wants a painted football field outside of Walden. There's, the ideas run the gambit, so she's gonna sort through those and see what she can actually deliver on. Collaboration, showing up at Wilmot, the fifth-grade team there has really combined for some joint SEL work where they're mixing up all of the classes, working on different coping strategies, allowing kids to kind of work with partners that they might not normally get to work with during the school day, which is really cool. And then this, you'll see a What's Good in 109 feature on this soon. Kipling had done this previously but is now bringing this back post-pandemic. It's their living museum, which is so cool, and it is third graders that research a historical figure. They then dress up as them, and they basically all make a button. You need to walk up to them and press the button, and they become lifelike and tell you their story and all of that stuff. Really cool. Some of the kids really got into it, and they had a really good job putting this on, and actually like had to stand there still for like 30 minutes, which is hard for third graders to do sometimes. Let's go to our featured school, and if he's brave enough to join me, Mr. Sobolski.
I'm brave.
You're brave? Okay. Was a guest recently at the Shepherd Baking Club, dressed up Chef Boyardee style and everything, Mr. Sobolski. This is a new thing this year at Shepherd, and it's really taken off.
Yes. Yeah. Baking Club has been an amazing addition. We've got near 30 students involved at Baking Club this year. I was invited to do some cooking with them, and I did a pancake recipe, and it was a hit. And the pancakes came out great, and then they dumped a bunch of candy and sugar on top of them, and they really, really enjoyed them. So, we had, we had a blast.
Yeah. Very, very cool that they get to do that, and that you were a willing participant in that. This, I'm not going to, we're gonna make sure we don't kill everybody with the sound here, but this was an assembly that was just hard to forget. I'll just preface it with that. Oh, now we're not. So, we want to watch the whole thing. You can go to our Facebook page and watch it, but basically, this was a team-building assembly, motivational speaker. You can see these students were paired up with staff members. Staff members had no idea what the dance moves that were coming. Students surprised by that.
No, and they had no idea they were dancing because the person that we brought in, he is a professional basketball spinner with an amazing life story and overcoming dyslexia, and talks a lot about being inclusive and supportive and being yourself, and this was sort of that be yourself and be okay to be you part, and the teachers were asked to partner with the students in some dancing. And the students led the teachers, and they had to mimic what the students were doing, and then vice versa, and I was one of the judges. It was a lot of fun.
Sorry, sixth graders that are here for embarrassing with this, but again, if you go to our Facebook page, you will see that basically all of the kids were singing along to Frozen, whether they were committed or not. They had a pretty good time with them. So, really cool way to get all the kids involved. School-wide World Cup is going on. This has been reinforcing positive behaviors, being a good citizen, being a good student, each of the teams getting goals and points and things for doing things, and there's gonna be a big assembly next week, too, right, an all-school soccer game?
Yes, all school, well, not all school. It'll be the winning team, so we, things have moved a little bit here. This is going off of our PRIDE acronym for personal responsibility, respect, inclusivity, determination, and empathy, and students in, on their teams are getting points for showing pride throughout each week. We did a special PRIDE World Cup trivia the other day to earn a few extra goals. Students can get goals against if they're not living up to our Spartan pride, and we are gonna risk blown ACLs and all that other good stuff on Wednesday, right before the holidays, with a students versus staff soccer match before we head out.
Feel time to rest up.
Dale, are we shored up with our workman's comp? We're good? Okay, good. All right, just continue.
This is a group that you will probably see at one of these meetings at some point. The esports team is just awesome. I've gotten to hang out with them a few times now. This is last week when they were simultaneously playing other middle schools from Texas and Ohio and beating both of them, and just really cool. And the best part about this is not only are these kids, you know, really into it, there's only, you know, four to eight kids that can play at a time. Other kids are over them keeping statistics. The bottom right, you see, those are the announcers. They're gonna put this live on YouTube at some point where they are like live announcing the match. So, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Ball run this. They really find a way to get every kid that comes involved, and it's just a really cool thing we offer that pretty much nobody else around here offers.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty unique to us right now, which is why we're playing against schools in Texas and Ohio and across the country, which is great. This is another one where like 30-plus students are involved, and we're finding ways to get them all connected in the esports programming, so it's been a lot of fun. And it is intense when you're in there. They are excited.
And then this is a really cool kind of experiential way to learn sixth-grade ELA. Based on different books they've been reading, they kind of set up these different exhibits and experiences for kids to go through. So, this was in partnership with the LC there. Sixth graders in Mr. Rama Heart's class had read A Night Divided, which is a story about life inside the Berlin Wall. So, they kind of set up this experience that kids went through and kind of played out some of the things from the book. So, a memorable way to learn rather than just sitting in class. So, that leads us to the exemplification of all three. So, we have some sixth graders with us. You don't have to come up here, just, yeah. Scientists from Mr. Crowe's class, they got to build their own racetrack recently, and so we're gonna show you a quick little interview with them. All right, I am here at Shepherd Middle School with Maya and Jacob, sixth graders from Mr. Crowe's science class. And guys, I visited your class last week, and you did a really cool thing with Hot Wheels cars. Who gets to play with Hot Wheels cars in school?
I guess us.
What was the premise of it? You guys were trying to do what? Make the car go as fast?
Make the car go as fast as you can using a limited amount of materials for the Hot Wheels, and then anything you can find in the classroom.
So, you had to build your own track?
Yeah.
What was the most challenging part of all of that?
Mainly just like getting the structural idea, because it's like, well, am I gonna put a heel there? Like, getting a good structure balance, also the ending was critical to make sure that the car wouldn't fly up at the end when it was like running to a book really fast. So, we had it, we made it gradually getting smaller end to like have the book slowly get tighter around the car.
Three.
Two.
Wait, I have my.
Three.
Two.
Wait, hold on. Go.
Okay, so you ran it a few times, right, and then you made some adjustments. I noticed you guys were using everything in the classroom, chairs, stools, tables, all of it.
We realized, hey, it doesn't say that we can't use anything. Yeah, and so we kept asking questions, but like. Double-checked that it wasn't specified in, it was Mr. Crowe, this instruction was Mr. Crowe.
Yeah.
And he said, like, what do you think? And we're like, we think that we can make it, and there's nothing staffing us. So, we used all the chairs and books that we could find, and then others used our inspiration.
They used your inspiration?
They were, they realized, hey, we can use books. Yeah.
So, clearly, like, there was a lot of failure in this, right? You tried to do things, and they didn't work so well.
I feel like we could have.
How did you, how did you persevere through that?
What was the type of thing, well, at least, for me and Jacob, we've known each other for like sixth, sixth grade, all of that, so all good, we had very good communication.
Okay.
So, when those like trial and error was happened, we were like, okay, so let's, let's think back on what we did and then how to make it better.
Personally, for me, what I do is I just don't really think about how I can fail. I think about how I cannot fail.
Wow.
And I do a lot of things that are very likely that I'm gonna fail.
Okay.
So, I, like, it's just become something that like, if I fail, then I don't really care.
That's good. That's, you know, a lot of people need to learn that lesson. What will you, you know, Mr. Crowe really stresses having fun while learning, too. What was the most fun part of this whole assignment?
Well, I think just getting the finished product, like, because we got to make a little We video, and it's like, we had him doing the voiceover, and it's like, it's like, oh, and he's doing it, and it's like, and that was just the fun part, seeing it all come together well.
So, thank you, guys, for being brave enough to talk to me on that. I'm still waiting on that We video. But I love what you said, Jacob, about, you know, not, just not being afraid to fail, right? That's what we want, we want all of our kids to just try stuff without worrying that they're gonna mess it up, or that they're not gonna get the A right away, or they're not gonna look perfect right away. And so, I saw that in your classroom, so good job by you two for exemplifying that. And you know what? I didn't go get those certificates from President Montgomery. We'll get them at the end.
I'm done.
Oh, you're done? Perfect. But that's a look at what's good in Shepherd, and I actually want to congratulate one more group here before we have everybody come up and get certificates. We actually have two other conference championship teams in the house with us. So, the sixth-grade ladies from Caruso Middle School won the conference title. I have the names of everybody there. I'll read them all really quick, and I don't have to clap after every single one, but Avery, Noah, Corinne, Emma, Talia, Lucy, Audrey, Naomi, Eva, Lily, Sasha, other Lily, Sophia, Juliana, Bess again, and there's one more hiding down below, Mishi. There we go. So, some of you are in attendance tonight. I'm gonna give Mrs. Spees some certificates to pass out. And our eighth-grade girls, this is the second year in a row they've won the conference. Some of them are with us tonight. Ellie, Ari, Carolina, Carlina, I'm sorry, Azalia, Eva, Caroline, Sophia, and Natasha. So, let's give everybody a round of applause. And that's a look at what's good in 109. So, let's take some pictures here. Why don't we start with our two Shepherd scientists? Let's get them their certificates, and then, board, you know where to go.
We're a little off-center, isn't it?
You are a little off-center, that's true.
Am I gonna like tell her? No.
Your timing take off from asking, like, who's this person?
The races, that's why I have it on us. Ugly races. Come close.
She's gotta put her muzzler on for stuff.
Stop it.
Move out of the way, too, here. One, two, three.
They're so cute.
Good job, guys. Thank you. Good job, ladies. Way to go.
Come on, girls.
Come quick. Yeah, faster.
Twenty-yard dish.
Oh, the swept pants? They got all the swag. Where was it held at?
At Wood Oaks.
Wood Oaks, fantastic.
So, yeah. We took two out of the.
Amazing. Good job, guys. Oh, they got him.
And then, I'm sorry, did the board have any questions? I usually give you guys time. Any questions, or? All right. Awesome. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy holidays. Happy holidays. I'll clear the room quick. You doing karaoke at the board meeting tonight?
Well, I'll tell you what.
Take care, everyone. Good night. Thank you.
I will say, I like your robe.
Dave, you coming tomorrow? Apparently, there's candy. Okay.
Is it Dave from the conference?
Oh, thanks.
Lauren, Ricky.
From the conference.
Yes, personally, I wrote it out with my hand.
Riviken.
On every single back.
Dave Riviken.
Dave Mutnick.
Mutnick. Okay, and this is Mitch.
Yes.
Any idea who the people in the background are?
I don't know. I saw one of my friends here earlier. I'm not quite sure why.
Who's friends?
My water.
There we go. The moment we've all been waiting for.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Simic?
What do the arrows mean, Mr. Steckling? So, this is superintendent's report. It will be brief tonight. So, I've been out and about around the district. There was an epic match between Shepherd and Caruso over at the Saks Center, and it came down to overtime and last-minute heroics, and one of the teams came out ahead. But it was, it was really, it was really quite, quite event, and one of the really neat things is how many students made a trip over to the Saks Center, which is not exactly in their backyard, so quite good attendance there. So, our basketball is in full season and swing, also was at one of the girls' basketball games this past week. In the coming week, we have Judgment Day, which is the door decorating contest at Shepherd, and this is in a, this is in a, an undertaking where classes have to work together to create something, the criteria for it, and then Mr. Steckling and I, and I'm not sure who else, gets roped into being judges for it, but it is, it's really quite interesting to see the different concepts that they come up with. And one of the things that they have to do is everybody in the classroom needs to be involved and then demonstrate that in their door decorating. It's quite good. And we have, did I skip one? Okay, winter weather reminders. So, this is for all parents. If you're sending your kids, the weather, pay attention to the weather and make sure that from day to day that you're aware that the elements can and do change. We have as a district, if there is inclement weather and we see it coming, we will notify people in advance of that, and we'll also be utilizing the time if we do have to call. Now, we'll do it as early as possible, but we'll also be utilizing the day as a remote learning day, so please be aware of that. And we have, soon to be delivered to all households, the 109 way. This is a paper production. Thank you, Mr. Steckling and Kat, for all the work on this, a great deal of work that goes into this. Couple times a year, we'll be sending something to all home and box holders in the district, and one of the reasons for that is that we sometimes lose contact with people after their kids graduate from our schools, and we want to maintain that. And we also have a lot of folks that are very, very invested in their public schools, and we want to maintain contact with them, and this is a way that we know will reach 100% of our residents. And so, this is, is a lot of work, and it's very well-done, very attractive. I think we will get quite a bit of good feedback on that. Want to notify everybody that they can expect another issue late in the spring as well. And we've, we're collaborating with our community. We're always looking for opportunities for our kids to connect with and learn from people in the community. If there's anybody that has something that they want to share with, with the schools or with the students, like, we had the, the person that came in and spoke to the students about the game Go recently. There are a lot of different opportunities for that, and there's a link on our website there about how to connect for community members. That's one of the things that Deerfield really specializes in is commitment to public ed and community service, and this is a way for people that are interested to participate. And finally, we have, congratulations here. We have a doctor in the house. Dr. Danielle Arnold. So, this is a very big deal and defended last week, and so we can look forward to a different name in the, in the group from, from this point on. So, congratulations, Danielle. Yep. And that concludes the superintendent's report, and we have cards ordered, I'm assuming.
Hey, if I can just add on for anybody that's listening online, if you're a parent of a first-time middle schooler, so is a sixth grader, rest assured that boys primarily, sometimes the girls, they can make it through any weather, pretty much with a short-sleeve shirt. When it gets below about 20, they might put on a long-sleeve shirt. Don't be alarmed by it. My son made it through three years of middle school so far, a year and a half of, year and a half of high school, and I think I've seen him with a sweatshirt once or twice, but other than that, it's usually a short-sleeve shirt. So, don't be alarmed by that, first-time middle school parents, and I'm sure Dale and John, his former middle school principals, can attest to that.
Absolutely.
That's just my public service announcement.
And shorts. Don't forget the shorts.
Shorts, too.
Yeah. Thank you for the public service announcement. The next item on our agenda is community participation relative to matters on the meeting agenda. We welcome your comments and questions tonight. The first period of community participation is for items related to tonight's agenda, and the second period of community participation near the end of the meeting is open for all members. If you wish to comment, please fill out a community participation form located on the podium and hand it to Rebecca Rudd. We will call you up one at a time to the podium to speak. Please limit the length of all comments to no more than two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board? Okay. The next item on our agenda is information items. Item 6.1 is freedom of information requests. Dr. Flippy?
Yeah, there are two commercial requests in your packet. We received one seeking some directory information and another seeking accounts payable information.
Thank you. Item 6.2, policy, first reading. Dr. Fisher?
So, sorry for those that remember this spiel, but I'll give it each time. The school board subscribes to the Policy Reference Education Subscription Service, which makes recommendations on policy for the Board of Education. Policy Committee meets multiple times a year. We had our last meeting at the end of October, beginning of November, and looked at recommendations from press to determine if we wanted to update the specific policies they were looking at. So, the committee went through it. Recommendations are in front of you. We make our adjustments based off of what comes from press, but also use our best judgment as a district. And sometimes you'll note in the policies in front of you that we'll take the updates from press. We will sometimes decide that we're not interested in that update and continue on with the language we have or craft our own language for it, which is a discretion of the Board. So, if you have any questions on the recommendations from that committee, feel free to reach out to me, and I can go through them with you and discuss them at length if that's what needs to happen. They'll come back to you next month for approval.
Does anyone have any questions about the policy? Okay, thank you. The next time, item on our agenda is 6.3, resolution authorizing emergency repairs to Caruso Middle School.
Yeah, we had a bit of bad luck at Caruso. We have, it's not uncommon for us to do leak repair on sections of flat roof on our buildings as they get to the latter stages of their lifespan. But it is unusual for us to proceed with a repair and then find out that we've got quite a bit more work to do. We had a leaking roof drain right near the vestibule, the front vestibule at Caruso Middle School. It was anticipated that the repair was $10,000 to cut out and replace that roof drain. There was no way to see that the damage was as bad as it was until the roof was opened. So, unfortunately, we have a roof that's opened and tarped right now at Caruso, and the cost to repair it is approximately $90,000. That requires special action from the Board because it exceeds $50,000. Normally, we would have to bid a project like that. We don't have a timeline that is conducive to bidding the project and moving forward with the repair with the weather that's on its way. So, we are recommending that the Board approve an emergency resolution to allow us to proceed with the repair at Caruso Middle School.
Two questions. One is pending approval, how quickly can they start?
Perhaps as early as this weekend, but we would get it knocked out here shortly.
Okay. And the only second question is, is have they removed enough roofing to determine they understand the extent to the damage?
Yeah, we had to go out approximately 15 feet from where the roof drain is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are we, I mean, I don't know, I don't know why I don't remember this answer, but are we insured or self-insured? It's? We're in a, in a pool. Okay. Is it just below the deductible or it makes no sense to? For, yeah, for a roof repair like this. Yeah, okay.
That's just regular maintenance?
Yeah, like, I'm, I mean, I can circle back and. I'm just curious, because usually water. I can run it through our insurance. I could certainly run it through our insurance and see if we get an opinion on it, but I think it's normal wear and tear. I'm not sure that we would necessarily get coverage on that, but. Yeah, it just depends, like, when, if you have normal wear and tear and then the water gets in and there's additional water damage. Yep. Sometimes. Yeah, we can, we can run that through.
Just interior, no damage?
Just wet ceiling tiles, but it's the roof deck that's the problem, so.
Basically, and I, I don't want to say this, but someone asked, like, can they tell how long it's been going through? Like, there's no mold considerations?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, the next item is 6.4, the annual audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. Dr. Flippy?
Yeah, the Finance Committee met back on November 17, and Don Shaw from Lauderbach and Amen joined us to present the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. It was a clean audit, and we received their highest opinion. I shared with the Board and the public in the packet kind of a one-page analysis comparing our budget to actuals, audited actuals. But again, a clean audit, and they offered two comments, which are just related to Gadsby statements, the first of which has to do with our capital asset policy. So, as Dale referenced, we have adopted the press, model press policy associated with valuing capital assets. They would like us to go further than that model policy to be compliant with one of the Gadsby statements. And then, the second comment was about a new Gadsby statement that requires us to value information technology leases. Do we need to, do we need to modify our policies at all, or is this just going to be an above and beyond? Meaning that if you followed that recommendation, we keep the same policy, but we just deliver beyond it? The recommendation is that we actually adopt a new policy. The audit firm provided us with model language. Dale, with his relationship with press. I guess my question was not so much that, I know there's the recommendation. It's one thing to achieve that, does that make sense? It's another thing to change the policy that then requires you to do that, does that make sense?
The recommendation from the auditing firm is to adopt a policy.
Right, okay. Just trying to create, I'm just trying to create a little, little room for you.
It should, it should go without saying that John and I had a bit of a debate about this very concept that you brought up. I'm like, you know, you could set the menu sign, we could exceed it. John's like, the auditors say that we should be going after a policy.
Any other questions about the audit? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of IMRF Authorized Agent.
Yep, this is one of a couple more housekeeping items for you. Kelly Mitchell was our IMRF Authorized Agent, which essentially is online portal access to be the district's point of contact with IMRF. IMRF is our, the pension fund within which the majority of our support staff members are members. So, they require the Board to adopt a resolution to appoint a new IMRF Authorized Agent, and I am asking that the Board appoint me as such.
Any questions? Okay. The next item on our agenda is 6.6, the 2023-24 Budget Calendar.
And always in December, we bring to the Board the budget calendar for the next school year in December. It requires Board action to direct me to develop a budget for the next school year, so we recommend you do that.
I think we will accept your recommendation. Any questions on the budget calendar? Okay. The next item on our agenda is action items, our consent agenda, which includes 7.1.1 personnel, 7.1.1.1 resignations and retirements, 7.1.1.2 leave of absence, 7.1.1.3 employment of certified staff, 7.1.1.4 employment of at-will, or, I'm sorry, employment of educational support staff, 7.1.1.5 employment of at-will staff, 7.1.2 bills for payment, 7.1.3 approval of regular meeting minutes from November 17, 2022, 7.1.4 approval of closed session meeting minutes from November 17, 2022. And that's all in the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is 7.2, a recommendation to approve Board member expenses from the Triple I Conference. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.3 is the closed session minutes by annual review. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the Board Secretary reviews minutes of closed session meetings by annually. If the substance of the minutes is, no longer needs to be, needs to remain confidential, the Board may choose to open the minutes to the public. In certain instances, information protected by law may be redacted from the closed, or from the disclosed minutes. Ms. Wanner, the Board Secretary has reviewed any closed session minutes recorded from May 26, 2022 through October 27, 2022. And the recommendation is for the Board to open the following closed session minutes with redactions if required for public inspection, the minutes from the August 2, 2022 meeting and the August 25, 2022 meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Roll call. Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.4, recommendation to approve the special meeting minutes from October 24, 2022, which was our Archon Peer School sites visit. And can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.7, recommendation to approve appointment of IMRF Authorized Agent. Can I have a motion, please? Roll call. Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.8, recommendation to approve memorandum of, of understanding for COVID-19 additional instructional stipend for 2022, 2023. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.14, approval of administrative contract for business manager.
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, John.
There you go.
We're looking forward to meeting him. 7.15, recommendation to approve legislative priorities. These are also, were discussed at last month's meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Wanner?
Aye.
Mr. Begley?
Aye.
Ms. Jackemu?
Aye.
Mr. Quo?
Aye.
And President Montgomery.
Aye.
Motion carries. Wow. That was a lot of action. It's a record. Okay, the next item on our agenda is committee reports. Do we have any committee meetings?
I had a True North Board meeting last night. One of the big things we talked about, there's the financial model that True North is using. I believe we're in our second year of using that. One of the things they're doing now is instead of waiting till the end of the year to evaluate the true process, process, they're looking at it mid-year. There's definitely a shortfall or a deficit of the amount of students they thought were going to come to their programming versus the amount of students that are actually attending. If that stays the trend, that means at the end of the year, when they do the true-up, districts absorb those extra costs. Does that make sense? Because True North is going to have a.
Because they're paying for the same amount of staff, even though they had fewer students than they.
Correct, and they have made as many fiscally conservative decisions as possible in terms of waiting to hire certain staff. You know, they aren't being egregious with their expenditures versus revenues, but yes, we're at a deficit, and that deficit is incurred by the school districts that are part of the membership. So, what they're considering doing right now is opening up these empty slots for non-member district students who would pay tuition to go. They would do so in a very thoughtful way to ensure that our ability to have guaranteed placement wouldn't be negatively impacted. Let's say we have a student that moves in next month, you know, and we turn to True North, and they, they're not going to say, oops, sorry, we filled up with non-member, you're out of luck. So, they're going to work very delicately, but I'm just keeping you guys posted because the true-up process will happen at the end of the year, and it may be likely that it's going to be more money. I think that was the.
Do we have any sense of what the allocation is for that?
They did not provide any during the meeting. I don't know, John, if you get, you know, get reports on that. The other thing, and Mike, if you actually want to talk about, do you want to talk about the superintendent's meeting they had about the financing?
Sure. Yeah, there's another portion of the conversation at True North regarding, and an assessment that they had on their physical plant and looking at the, the needs that they might have for roofing and for HVAC. The long and short of it is, is that there will be an additional assessment beyond the initial changes that they're making. So, this is like a phase two, if you will, and it's also going to be scaffolded over a period of time along, it's about a, over a decade time horizon, so annual capital improvements. The initial year of that will be about a quarter of a million dollars for 109, and then each year after that will be some other amount that, these aren't guaranteed costs to us, but they are likely, and they want to put us on notice.
And that is for their O and M fund for those maintenance. They also have a phase-two plan for their construction on their building, which is a separate specially assessed fee that they're going to be charging our district for that construction for phase-two. So, there's two upcoming new costs in addition to the potential uptick in true-up fees. So, kind of three buckets to look at there. They did just complete their strategic plan. They reviewed it with the Board last night. I believe it'll be up for action in February to approve, and then will be shared with the districts after that. That's the True North update.
Any other committee reports? I just have Ed Redd updates. So, they had two meetings, I think, last week.
One of the things they're doing now is instead of waiting till the end of the year to evaluate the true process, process, they're looking at it mid-year. There's definitely a shortfall or a deficit of the amount of students they thought were going to come to their programming versus the amount of students that are actually attending. If that stays the trend, that means at the end of the year, when they do the true-up, districts absorb those extra costs. Does that make sense? Because True North is going to have a
Because they're paying for the same amount of staff, even though they had fewer students than they
Correct, and they have made as many fiscally conservative decisions as possible in terms of waiting to hire certain staff. You know, they aren't being egregious with their expenditures versus revenues, but yes, we're at a deficit, and that deficit is incurred by the school districts that are part of the membership. So what they're considering doing right now is opening up these empty slots for non-member district students who would pay tuition to go. They would do so in a very thoughtful way to ensure that our ability to have guaranteed placement wouldn't be negatively impacted. Let's say we have a student that moves in next month, you know, we turn to True North, and they, they're not going to say, oh, sorry, we filled up with non-member, you're out of luck. So they're going to work very delicately, but I'm just keeping you guys posted because the true-up process will happen at the end of the year, and it may be likely that it's going to be more money. I think that was
Do we have any sense of what the allocation is for that?
They did not provide any during the meeting. I don't know, John, if you get, you know, get reports on that. The other thing, and Mike, if you actually want to talk about, do you want to talk about the superintendent's meeting they had about the financing?
Sure. Yeah, there's another portion of the conversation at True North regarding, and an assessment that they had on their physical plant and looking at the, the needs that they might have for roofing and for HVAC. The long and short of it is, is that there will be an additional assessment beyond the initial changes that they're making. So this is like a phase two, if you will, and it's also going to be scaffolded over a period of time along, it's about a, over a decade time horizon, so annual capital improvements. The initial year of that will be about a quarter of a million dollars for 109, and then each year after that will be some other amount that, these aren't guaranteed costs to us, but they are likely, and they want to put us on notice.
And that is for their O and M fund for those maintenance. They also have a phase-two plan for their construction on their building, which is a separate specially assessed fee that they're going to be charging our district for that construction for phase-two. So there's two upcoming new costs in addition to the potential uptick in true-up fees. So kind of three buckets to look at there. They did just complete their strategic plan. They reviewed it with the board last night. I believe it'll be up for action in February to approve, and then will be shared with the districts after that. That's the True North update.
Any other committee reports?
I just have Ed Redd updates. So they had two meetings, I think, last week. No real legislation moved forward that affected the county. There's one that moved out of the Senate to the House, but it only pertained to Cook County. I think the only thing that really, right now, that would really, I guess, pertain to our district that they're working really hard on is the mandate training relief. So that's going to be an ongoing process. It's not going to happen in a year, but it's something that they're really working towards. And then I set up a meeting with Mike in January to talk more about the legislative priorities for our district in preparation for the legislative dinner for Ed Redd on January 23.
Maureen has graciously agreed to be our board legislative liaison. So she'll be taking the lead on pursuing the legislative priorities that we just adopted tonight. So if anybody has any thoughts or suggestions that they'd like to share with Maureen, please feel free. Any other committee reports? Okay. The next item on the agenda is open community participation. The second period of community participation is open for all matters. If you wish to comment, please fill out a community participation form located on the podium and hand it to Ms. Rudd. We will call you up one at a time to the podium to speak. Please limit the length of all comments to no more than two minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the board? The next item on our agenda is Board Superintendent Other. Mr. Simic?
Yeah, the summary of the, nearing the end of the first semester of the year, one of the things that I think Bear's pointing out is the palpable relief that everybody has experienced over the course of this school year compared to the last couple of school years, and so that the absence of the plastic and the masks and so on, and so on, the ability to have carpets on the floors for little kids and to gather and to, to work together in an unfettered manner has really been a great relief. It's also been incredibly challenging and hard because you have to relearn, and kids have forgotten how to do school, and then staff also have to relearn their habits. So at the same time, there's a lot of energy, there's also a lot of exhaustion, and the break, any number of our staff are just like, I just want to have time just to recharge. And so going into the break, it's, it's, I think, a really wonderful thing to have had as good a school year as we've had already so far this year, but a well-deserved break by, for our staff. I'm really pleased and proud to, to be able to be in this place and think back what it was like for the past couple of years, and it's good, it's very good. And in district-wide, we're also just doing really good work on, you know, there'll be a future update for the strategic plan, the things that the board laid out as far as ambitions. We are living those things, and we'll be updating the board on that again soon.
Great. Any questions for Mike?
I just had a couple, a couple things since it was such a short meeting, not too much on the agenda. I want to wish everybody happy holidays and to thank everyone for all your work this year. I think it has been just night and day from what we've had for the last couple of years, and I think it shows in the joy that you see in the kids' faces when we see them here and in the schools, and, you know, I think the parents are much more relaxed than they have been for the last couple of years, and it's great to kind of get back to, get back to normal. But I, I want to thank everybody for all their work in making that happen and the support that you've given all the teachers and staff.
Thanks, Eric, and Eileen, and Joanna for organizing the holiday drive for our families. It's great that we, that we collect things for people in our, outside of our community, but it's also important that we take care of the people inside, our families inside our community. So thank you for organizing that. Congratulations, Danielle. I thought I saw you refer to doctor on some, something recently, and I was like, did I miss that? Apparently not. And thank you, John, for the audit. I know, I'm sure it was a heavy lift this year, having a new audit firm, since you're not used to working with them. So thank you very much, and thank you for all the work that went into making it a clean audit.